Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. All right. I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting of October 22nd to order. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Commissioner Reina, Commissioner Verino, Commissioner Alderetti, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, Chairman Laughlin, Commissioner Mendoza, Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Chair for the record, Commissioner Reina, Alderetti and Contreras Leo will not be present at tonight's meeting. You have quorum.
Thank you. Will you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, there are a couple of administrative items that I'd like to talk about here before we get into our meeting. First of all, we're now open for public comments on non-agendized items. Now, for clarification, let me state this. If you're here to talk about the project 2525 Main Street as a project, that's a non-agendized item. If you want to talk about the meeting on the 5th that's proposed for the 5th of November, that's on the agenda. So you can speak about the meeting on item number five. You can speak about the project or anything else that you want to speak about on public comments at this time. So I've received a number of cards for those that want to speak on item five. If you are going to talk about the project, then you need to talk about it on the public comments at this time. So, does that make sense?
No.
No. I didn't think so.
We just barely hear you.
Okay.
Repeat, thank you.
Repeat? Okay. Right now, we're open for public comments on non-agenda items. A non-agenda item would be if you want to speak about any project that the Planning Commission is going to review or reviewing, you can talk about that now. If you want to talk specifically about the November 5th meeting, which is on the administrative calendar here, you need to talk about the date and what concerns you have relative to the date. It's not a time to talk about the project or any other project. So, that's how we're looking at these two different items. Lisa?
Right now, it's the public comment for anything that you want to talk about that's not on the agenda. That could be 2525 as a project itself. If you want to talk about the item that is proposing to have a special meeting on November 5th, that's item number five and you can address it then.
Okay, the second item that I'm going to talk about is that we have a consent item on our agenda and then I'm going to move item five up to the next item on the agenda because most people are here to talk about that. So, we will have the consent calendar item and then item number five. Okay, having said that, we're going to start with the non-agendized item. Dale Halbert. You have, oh, let me also say, for sake of time, two minutes, two minutes to talk.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, since December of last year, I've been coming to the meetings and providing you factual information on how we feel about 2525. And in doing so, I've addressed items on the EIR, the draft EIR, which is still a draft at this point in time. We expect to have a final EIR by the end of the week, which, as you know, will make it extremely difficult to have you guys talk about it later on down the road even. A couple of items that are on the EIR that I'm going to find interesting to look at are the egress onto Bush, or onto Edgewood. That's still in there. It's still an option. It hasn't been removed and we asked for it to be removed. So, that still could eventually happen. The other item is the access out of the state park. That item might require the state to be contacted, which could take weeks, months, who knows how long. Again, that item would need to be addressed before it's brought to you guys or maybe even before it's finalized, I don't know. The other item on the EIR that's of concern to mine is the table that addressed the cumulative projects. Conveniently missing were two items on the cumulative project list. Both of those items were projects that are associated with the applicant of 2525. The Heritage Project was omitted, 1,200, over 1,200 units. And the Lagarto at the Met Project was omitted from the cumulative list, which results in almost 1,400, 1,500 units, who knows how many traffic trips and everything else, which will impact a lot of the analysis that's done in the EIR. So, maybe they were able to do it in the three weeks that they've been reviewing it so far. I don't know, but we'll be looking for it and hopefully you will be too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Okay, the next is Clay Henderson. And I'm going to call, if I can, I'm going to call up Mark Angel and Chad Morales, if you could be on the side waiting, it'd be great.
Good evening. My name's Clay Henderson. I would object to the length of time we have to review the ERI. We should have the same length of time to review their comments as they took to review our questions that we submitted to make sure that all those questions are answered and proposed in a proper fashion. And being as close as we are to an election, I think there's some issues here that need to be addressed as far as having a little time to pass the election and maybe there'll be some new council members that would have some other input concerning this project. I live on Oakmont, off of Santa Clara. I've been there for 22 years and I'm very proud of the neighborhood. I know a lot of the neighbors in our neighborhood and I think it's just a real special spot. So, I have been involved in the construction industry my whole entire life. I'm a retired pipe fitter and I've done a lot of work in Orange County over the years. And there's a lot of vacant areas that they could build this building. Instead of going two parking structures below ground, water tables at 20 feet and going as high as they're going in a neighborhood, it doesn't make sense. I think there'll be a considerable impact with trucks waiting to unload, haul dirt away and a staging area and the freeway is going to be a big problem. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Clay. Mark?
My name is Mark Angle. I live on Santiago Avenue and I just, I'm hoping that I didn't misunderstand. I have a question concerning the EIR. One of the parts of the EIR, which is kind of dear to me, is the water situation. And in the EIR that I read, it was stated that there's ample supplies of water for all the projects, but there's no statistics that back any of that up. So, I could easily say there is not enough water. So I was just wondering if that might be addressed as far as how they figure out exactly how much water is available for the future. So, that was all.
Thank you, Mark. Chris Morales? Lisa Ganes?
Hello, I'm Lisa Ganes and I'm a resident of Park Santiago and thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I've been here before and I've made a number of presentations related to the same topics and I'm going to keep my presentation a little bit brief here because I believe I've made my point before. We have residents in the neighborhood that have 96% disapproval of this project. It's not a right fit for the neighborhood and I think that the comments that have been made regarding the draft EIR, I had numerous concerns about some of the ways that the draft EIR was assembled. Dale already brought up one. I'm concerned about the cumulative impacts. I don't believe that the statistics were including even the Main Place Mall development. That was not included in the table for the cumulative impacts. There are going to be so many things that are going to be impacted in the neighborhood. All I would like for you to do today and if this, we'll talk about it a little later on, but please take into consideration what the summary and the findings were of the draft EIR, which was a no-build-no-project. And I'm hoping that whatever comes of this thing that we're going to be talking about later, I hope you guys take that into consideration, that it was assessed that that was the best option for that space. So, I thank you for your consideration and I hope that you actually side with the residents that are going to be impacted the most by this project. The developers aren't going to be living in the area, they're going to be in and out and if this project is built, we'll be stuck with that and stuck with the ramifications of it. So I really appreciate your consideration and hope you vote in favor of the no-build-no-project plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Art Pedrosa?
I know you all personally. I know that you have big hearts and that you love this community as much as I do. And as the previous speakers have mentioned, I only ask that you remember that you're here to serve the community, not the wealthy developers that come and go. As a candidate for school board, I'd also like to note for the record the fact that there is a school in my neighborhood, Hoover, a historic school, has been there for many years. Mark, you've been involved with the school district, so you know. It's not a neighborhood school. They bus the kids there. I can't imagine how those buses are going to navigate through Main and Edgewood with all the traffic that this 2525 development is going to bring. It's going to create a public safety issue, in my opinion. It's already tough getting in and out in the morning and after work, so please keep that in mind. And as one of the other speakers mentioned, I think the best thing to do is really delay approval of this project until the new council gets seated. I believe that happens in mid-December. That would really be the most appropriate way to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Art. Ruth Keller. Ruth Keller. Michael Plantamora?
I'm just going to speak on the other end of the project, not for the, for the date. I'm going to speak on the date, not on the project itself.
Okay. Karen Egar? Karen, sorry, Karen.
If you don't mind, I'm going to address both the project itself, the EIR, and the date of, the proposed date for the meeting. I reviewed the draft EIR and I provided over 50 comments on the draft EIR. These were substantial comments on the facts that went into the analysis of the significant cumulative impacts. Throughout the EIR, the drafters of the EIR didn't find significant impacts, but I certainly did with the set of facts, once corrected, for each of the sections of the EIR. So I've asked for the EIR to be basically redone to get the facts right so that we can actually look at the significant impacts of the project and we can understand what the mitigations need to be for those impacts. That wasn't in this draft EIR. There is no way this is ready to go to a final and there's absolutely no way that it's ready to be voted on by any council. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Again, I have two more cards. I have two cards. Ruth Keller. Okay, we'll put that aside. And Clark, Chris Meisler.
Diane Fradkin for Park Santiago. I just want to talk briefly about the draft EIR for 2525 North Main. As previous speakers have mentioned, this document is incomplete. There are several unresolved issues and it needs to be looked at further and further analyzed. Some of the specific issues have to do with the access to the site. There's been some discussion with the developer that said he was abandoning the Edgewood access, which would leave only the Main Street ride-in, ride-out driveway. There's talk about the proposed walkie-way access, but as mentioned previously, that has to go through the State Parks Service and probably with the city traffic engineer as well to determine how that's going to work out. So, the whole access issue needs to be further analyzed. Another issue is the estimated, the project's estimated occupancy rate is extremely low. There's 77% studios and one-bedroom apartments, which is extremely high. The rents there for one-bedrooms are proposed at about $2,100 a month. So likely, you're going to have more than one person living in a one-bedroom apartment. That has a snowball effect on the parking ratio that's been used. We'll have spillover parking in our neighborhood. Then it snowballs effect into the whole traffic analysis. That needs to be relooked at because the numbers aren't accurate. And then, of course, one of the final issues that's more of a cumulative impact is your project, your project, your actual existing and planned projects. So all that needs to be reconsidered and I hope that you take the time to read the comments that we have respectfully submitted to you through the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. At this time, the cards that I have remaining are for item number five, unless someone who put in a card for item number five wants to come up at this time. Okay. Sir, come on up. And state who you are so I can pull the card.
Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Robert D. Bach. I'm a resident of Santa Ana and Park Santiago. As I stand here in front of you, I kind of wish that I hadn't skipped Political Science 101 so many times. However, I do remember a few things from it. One is that a famous man wrote some famous words in a speech, that this is a government of the people, by the people and for the people. Of the people means that you are part of the people of Santa Ana and that we are the people of Santa Ana. You are probably residents of Santa Ana. If you're not, you probably should be. And by the people means that we elect the government, we are residents of Santa Ana. These people are all residents of Santa Ana, I believe. And as so, we elect you to do what we think is correct for the city and for ourselves. And the final one is for the people. We expect you to be for us as the people of Santa Ana. We are unopposed in our opposition to 2525 North Main Street. We believe that as such, that you should be for us in opposing this yourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Would you state your name?
My name is Joe Lester.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I live in Park Santiago. I've lived there for 25 years. Thank you.
What do you want to see on your tippy toes?
I tried to submit comments to the EIR. It took me three days to download such a vast document because I was on a very slow internet connection. I don't believe that 10 days is short enough to address the EIR. One of the comments that I made, and I don't know that it ever got uploaded, was that this site is on a liquefaction zone in between Park, in between Santiago Creek and the 5 freeway. It's suitable for a wood frame house, maximum two stories. It is not suitable for a big masonry building, which will slump into the 5 freeway and possibly take a lot of lives with it. The other thing is that this site is within 100 feet of the freeway. The far end of the site is still within 500 feet of the freeway. This is where nobody should be building a residence. It's suitable for an office, it's not suitable for a residence. There are houses with that close, but they were built before the freeway. We live in a beautiful jewel of a neighborhood, which had the freeway cut through. We don't need this. This is just unsuitable. When I worked on Parker Street in Orange, which was one mile away from my house, it took me half an hour to get there from Park Santiago because it takes so long to leave Edgewood to get to Main. And once we got there, no parking.
Thank you, Joe.
John Stevens. I live on Santa Clara. And most of my issues, in fact, all of my issues have been eloquently addressed, but I'd just like to say, point out two things. One, I go over to the mall a lot to 24 Hour Fitness and when I come back in the afternoon, the southbound Main Street traffic is often backed up from both the 5 freeway entrances all the way past Walkie Way. Another thing about the water table, a late friend of mine, Jim Elliott, told me that he drilled a well in his backyard and struck artesian water at 24 feet and actually had to cap the well off. So, the water's down there and it's pretty shallow. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, Marisol Gomez. I had card number 44, but I'm going to speak now. That's okay with you?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I've grown up in this neighborhood, 45 years. I used to deliver the paper to the neighborhood when I was little, on a bicycle. The street traffic has gotten worse since I was young. It's only going to get worse with this new building being put in, so please consider that. When I come home off of the 22 freeway, I pass Main Street because the traffic is awful. So I go to ground, go around, there's congestion all throughout the neighborhood, every street, Santa Clara, Santiago, where I live, even on Edgewood, there's traffic. I want you also to consider safety issues for this complex. I cycle a lot. So riding a bicycle, there's no bicycle lane on that street whatsoever. Adding more traffic is going to make it worse. After high school, I moved away from Santa Ana for a bit, but I had the opportunity to move back into the home where I grew up. It's a charming neighborhood, but coming back and hearing that this is being proposed to rezone for an eight-story building, it's just not going to be good for the entire neighborhood. I'm asking you, please, to keep our neighborhood historical, keep it charming. That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Marisol.
My name is Bill Bonnet. I am the Treasurer of the Park Santiago Neighborhood Association. I wanted to speak briefly before speaking about the special meeting regarding 2525. The issue I think we need to really discuss here, of course, the use of the land is of paramount importance, but also the proposed density. As I'm sure you're certainly aware, the 496 units equates to 84 apartment units per acre. This parcel is only six acres large. So we, in our spare time, we tried to research where in the city of Santa Ana there was a density for a project that met this amount. We found none. So then, we asked ourselves, well surely, there's a project abutting R1 that's 90% of the proposed project? We found none. We kept going down the list, 80% that abuts R1 of another multifamily project, there is none in the city of Santa Ana. There is none until you get all the way down to 50% of the proposed density. What are we doing to Santa Ana? We're not even in the ballpark of the realm of reasonableness. This has gone too far. We are reasonable people. We will accept reasonable findings. We will not accept a 100% increase on a project this large, abutting R1. Please, be reasonable. We are reasonable people. Thank you.
How about you?
Hi, my name is Bill Sorenstein. I'm a longtime resident of Santa Ana. Went to Sierra when it was in elementary school, so that tells you a little bit about how long I've been around. I'm not an expert, like some of these people are, on construction or even the process of the Planning Commission, et cetera, et cetera. I'm actually a financial advisor by occupation. One of the things that we do is that we advise plan sponsors adopting 401K plans and pension plans on their fiduciary responsibilities. I myself am a fiduciary on the plans that we work with regarding the investments in the plan. So while I don't know much about construction or these projects, I do know a lot about being a fiduciary, meaning your fiduciary obligations. And I believe that as members of this council, that you have a fiduciary obligation to us as residents. as residents of the city of Santa Ana, our fair city. And I have only one question for you in that regard, is what is the rush? Why do we need to move up the timetable on addressing this project and getting it, trying to get it approved before a new election, a new board, a new city council? Why not take the time, as many have suggested, to really look at the environmental impact report carefully, address the issues of density, and move forward, as the previous speaker said, in a very reasonable fashion? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Hi, I'm Mike Ovai, Park Santiago president. I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of you guys, and I know you're good people, and you're going to make the right choice tonight and deny the application for an early meeting. There's many reasons to do it. October 5th being the eve of the election. We all know how we're going to be studying our books and trying to interpret what we can of all the legal speech and everything else that we're going to have to figure out what the heck it means just to vote on Tuesday. So who's actually going to be able to make a meeting on Tuesday night? The IR hasn't had time to be completed and reviewed, and we just asked that, you know, if you're going to have a special assessment, how are you going to be able to review the final draft? And I guess my last point I wanted to make is, you know, Park Santiago is here in force, and if the developer wants a special assessment, I hope they can make it to this meeting.
Thank you, Mike. So item five, or is it a general? No, the woman that's standing next to you.
That's number five. Agenda item number five.
Okay.
Do you want me to go?
No, then this gentleman's going to talk. All right, Justin? All right.
Hello, folks. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. I just want to say the draft EIR is missing an item. I don't know if it was, at the time it was proposed, but the renovation of the Main Place Mall is not listed in the draft EIR, which currently is proposed 1,900 residential units along with 400 hotel rooms, not to mention office space and other commercial retail that's going to be added. To say that that won't have an impact on the immediate area is pretty ridiculous, and to omit it from the draft EIR doesn't make any sense. So I think that needs to be brought back in and reassessed. That's it.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, at this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak on non-agendized Okay, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Comments, sorry, all the comments, my bad. Okay, we're now going to move to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll move.
Still move.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The vote is 4-0, three absent. Like to have a motion on the absence of Commissioners Roman Reyna, Eric Alderetti, and Cynthia Contreras-Leo.
I'll move approval. I second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0, three Commissioners' absences. We will now move to the business calendar. This is the time and place to consider item number one, Site Plan Review Number 2018-02 for the Elon Mixed Use Project located at 1660 East First Street. Let me just ask, do any of the Commissioners have anything to disclose on this project at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman McLaughlin. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Just as a brief recap, this is the Elon Mixed Use Development Project that was heard and considered by the Planning Commission on July 23rd of this year. At the time, the project was presented to the Commission. The Commission took public testimony. There were a handful of speakers. And then, was also considered in tandem with the Metro East Mixed Use Overlay Project, which subsequently continued on to City Council and was recently approved. Now that that is in a state of approval, the project's required resolution specific to Elon has returned before you tonight for a formal adoption. And based on that, the staff is continuing to recommend approval of the project. You have to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you. Does the Commissioner have any questions of staff? Okay. Thank you, Ali. Bring it back to the -- let's -- have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Does the applicant want to comment at this point in time? No? All right. We will open this item for public comment? No? Would anybody like to speak? Again, would any -- just would anybody like to have any comments at this point in time? No? Okay, we have a motion on this item.
Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes.
I'll move recommended action, which is adopt a resolution approving Site Plan Review Number 2018-02 as condition for the Elon Mixed Use Development Project.
I'm second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the vote is 4-0 with three absent. Okay, at this point in time, we are going to move to item number five. At this moment, does staff have any comments at this, on item number five?
Just have one real quick comment, considering that we have a number of speaker cards. Is there anyone here at the meeting for item number four, which is the annexation project?
For your information, the item is not quite here yet, but we are going to ask for continuance of the annexation. So because of the number of speakers, I just didn't want you to have to wait. So if you have any questions, you can give us a call the next day.
Okay. Any other comments at this time?
Not at this point.
All right. What I'd like to do on this is, Lisa, would you please state how this process works with regards to establishing a special meeting?
Sure. Pursuant to the Brown Act, a special meeting can be called by either the chairperson or a majority of the members of the Commission. And that would have to be four people affirmatively voting for a special meeting.
Would that -- have we received any written communication on this item?
We have, and those have been distributed and posted onto our website.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak on this item at this point in time? We have a few cards. So some of you would like to speak. I'm going to start with Kathy Moorhead, and I'm going to ask that Robert DeBosch and Ellen Callaway come to the side.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Moorhead, and I live in Park Santiago. And I'm here tonight to voice my objection to having a special meeting for the 2524 North Main Project prior to the election. I don't think that this should be allowed. I don't think that the proper time has been given, as was mentioned for all the reasons before I came up and spoke. I think that it shows favoritism. I just don't think it's correct.
Robert DeBosch? Okay, thank you.
Chairman McLaughlin and Commissioners, I'm Mrs. Ellen Callaway. I'm your neighbor. I'm a resident of Floral Park, Santa Ana. I'm here as an individual, not representing any group or organization or institution. And I'd like to talk to you about administrative matter number five, which right now just says, "Call for a special meeting on November 5, 2018 to consider 2525 North Main." I'm all for a special study or workshop to discuss constituent concerns about this I'd like to suggest that instead of just voting on a special meeting on November 5, first you decide what the purpose of the meeting is. I'd like to suggest then that you have all the information you need to hold that special meeting, which I hope is addressing constituent concerns about the EIR. Then, when you make sure that you've got all the information you have to conduct a comprehensive, incredible, special study, as authorized in the bylaws, then you might follow the bylaws, which says ordinarily you'll have your meeting on the second or fourth Monday of the month. If there's a holiday, you have it the day after, since it's going to be Veterans Day. I know I'm a veteran. Then you would have it on November 26. You would first agendize a special study as a matter in that regular meeting, and then, if you needed more time, that's when you would call for a special study meeting. Unless there's a real reason to propel this earlier, I'd ask you to wait until you have the information so that you can have a comprehensive, credible constituent special study meeting. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you for the consideration, and thank you for your service.
John Fratkin, Patricia Coleman, and Stephen Simtak?
Hi, I'm John Fradkin, longtime resident of Park Santiago. We've lived on Oakmont for the past 26 years. It really pains me that we're even considering fast-tracking this project. It is dirty politics at its mass. There's a process. We need to respect the process. You guys have a fiduciary duty to respect the process. If ever there was a project to not be fast-tracked, this is it. And the only reason we're doing this is because there's an election on November 6, and we might have three new council people. That's just the way it happened. It's nobody's fault, but it's certainly no reason to fast-track the project. There's no reason to feel sorry for Mr. Ryan Ogulnick. He's a smart, savvy guy. He spent $17 million, and he bought a nice piece of property. He's going to make money on it. It's just a matter of how much money he makes. And I think that his feeling is, was to design the biggest, baddest, hugest project he could possibly conceive, and just figured that the city of Santa Ana needs the money so bad that they'll just approve it. And that's just -- that may happen, that may not happen, but we have to respect the process, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, John. Patricia Coleman?
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. I'm Patricia Coleman. I'm from Park Santiago. I would like you to reconsider a rush meeting out of respect for the members of our community. I think one of the things that's been a sore point for this project is that the people have felt like this has been forced on them, and that we haven't been given any meaningful opportunity to participate. The whole thing was handed to us already, birthed, so to speak, rather than us being really at the beginning of the project. So I think there's a lot of frustration, and I think that it would be a good show of respect for all the concerns of the people, that they be listened to and considered, and the time be given to that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We've owned our property in Santa Ana for 42 years, and we love the neighborhood. I'm concerned about the motion. I haven't read the agenda item, but it's my understanding it's the effort to set up a meeting to approve up or down the project on November 5, the night before the election. Or is it November 6? November 5?
November 5.
Okay, thank you. And in essence, it's an attempt to prevent review and the creation of comments to the revised EIR. And it's my understanding that it's, the EIR is not as yet released, but it's to be released by October 26. And it's 3,500 pages. I don't know how anybody can get through it in that amount of time if they have any other employment or life responsibilities. And yet, for you to review it and then have comments and review them and allow a discussion, a knowing discussion before the vote, I don't understand how this can be rushed like it's proposed to be rushed. So I would ask that you don't deny us due process and the right to be heard on this issue, which in essence you would be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Art Pedrosa, I have one for you for this item. You spoke on the first item. Are you okay at this moment? You all right, Art? Or you want to speak on this, and two?
Yeah, just one more thing I want to mention. Voting on this project before the new councils and paneling, before the community has had a chance to really weigh in on this, and before the EIR has truly been digested by your body, is also an embodiment of the sunshine ordinance that most of the folks on that sign voted for. I want to remind you about that. Transparency used to be important here a few years ago to those very same council members on that sign, and now suddenly it's not. So please consider that as well, as you've heard from the speakers before. It's just not good to rush this project. We need to do our due diligence and wait for the new council to be seated. And as one of the other gentlemen noted, the developer knew what he was buying when he paid $17 million. He knew that property was not zoned for a mega huge apartment complex that's going to ruin our neighborhood.
Diana Fratkin, you spoke earlier. Do you want to speak on this item? And Patty Mays, if you would come up and -- And Patty Mays, if you would come up and be, Turnhill?
Hello again. Diane Fradkin, Park Santiago. I just wanted to state for the record that I am opposed to the special meeting being requested for November 5. And based on my previous statement regarding the draft EIR, there needs to be further review and analysis, and the comments need to be digested, and perhaps the document needs to be reevaluated, and perhaps a alternative project with something in the realm of 30 dwelling units per acre needs to be further looked at as, at the time when they go through the comments. And ultimately, I think it's a good process. I've been involved with many EIRs. This one doesn't really do itself justice. So I would highly recommend that you take the time and really do the, the work that needs to be done on behalf of the citizens of Santa Ana. Thank you.
Patty?
Yes. Hello, my name is Patty Mays. I've lived in Park Santiago with my family for over 30 years, and I just want to say that this whole process feels wrong. This developer has come in from the very beginning and acted like it was a slam dunk, that he was going to get this permit, he was going to build whatever he wanted without our input. So I'm just saying, you know, why are we rushing? Please don't rush. You know, you need to understand the EIR. There's 350 pages, plus all the comments from the neighbors. You know, it seems like everything's being rushed. It took the residents 60 days to develop their comments. So how can the Commissioners do it in 10 days? The Planning Commissioners, please do not rush to make a decision that is too important to our neighborhood. The public process should, should not be shortened. Our, our neighborhood will be affected by this decision, and we need the city staff to work with our interest, not with the developer's interests, but with ours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Dee?
Yeah, Bea Tiri Tili, Park Santiago Neighborhood Association, Vice President. I want to reiterate what everybody else has said. I'm with them. There's no reason to rush this project. The homes in, in our neighborhood have been there, some of them 100 years, all of them for decades. And some of us here tonight have been neighbors with each other for decades. This project's going to be with us for decades. For some of us who presumably will die in this neighborhood, these will be our neighbors till the day we die. Let's not rush it. It's, it's too big, it's too much, it's not the right development for our neighborhood. I'm currently working on a master's degree in leadership development, and one of the pinnacles of good leadership is that leaders are there to be servants of the people. All of you today are here to be servants for your fellow Santa Ana residents. I hope you're going to do the right thing by us and for your community, and vote to, at the very least, delay this project until we can get it, something reasonable out of this developer, if not stop it altogether. Thank you for your service to us and to all of us in Santa Ana.
And then behind Peter, if you could, Gregory Skinner. And I believe it's Robert Stevens. Apologize for the.
Good evening, Chairman and Commission. I want to direct through the Chair, possibly through the City Attorney. There's an ethical problem here. Mr. Becerra was replaced on this commission, I believe, to get one more vote for this project, and he's now running for City Council, and this is the reason I believe that this is being rushed through to get a security vote for the developer. And I have reason to believe that Roman Reina has received campaign funds and has hosted campaign rallies on the developer's property. And he should be recused from this vote in any discussion in accordance with the Brown Act of the State of California. Now, I've been a resident of this city for 55 years and seen a lot of shenanigans in here. I am president of the Commune Board that oversees all 64 neighborhoods in the city, and it is my job to preserve the living liability of those neighborhoods. We need to preserve this city because it is going to die a very slow death as we march towards bankruptcy. So we have to be careful that this development project doesn't come back and bite us with a major lawsuit from the residents of this city. So I urge you to take caution and wait for the new council to come on board, and I would urge you to refer the issue I raised to the Ethics Commission that we have in the city, and it should go through the City Attorney. We do have an ethics problem. It's very unethical to receive campaign contributions for a vote for a project of this, especially a project of this size. So I urge you to be very careful with this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Gregory Skinner.
Good evening. My name's Gregory Skinner. I'm a resident and owner in Park Santiago. I'm here to oppose this meeting on the 5th, and hopefully you will also, hopefully this will convince you. You know, 10 days is clearly an inadequate amount of time to review. While it meets the letter of the requirements, it also appears that it's a fast, it's a deliberate attempt to fast-track this. For a developer who's supposed to be building with sensitivity to the community and cognizant of the needs of the residents, it doesn't appear that that's what they're doing. This development is something that affects everybody in this community. It's not like we're cutting down a tree. It's not like we're planting some grass. This is going to affect the amount of traffic that goes through our neighborhood, the safety of the residents of the neighborhood, including all the children who live there. It's going to affect our day-to-day lives. So really what I'm here to do is urge you to not have this meeting on the 5th. Give the residents and yourselves an appropriate amount of time to review all of the information in the EIR, and it appears that all of that information is not there. And none of this is going to take place in a proper fashion if we have this meeting on the 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Gregory. Lisa, Lisa Gantz. And Christine Denny Helbig, would you also come up?
Hello again, Lisa Gantz, Park Santiago resident. I've changed the topic of my presentation because I was expecting that we were going to be getting some sort of reason why we were having this special meeting. And I thought the staff was going to be presenting something to explain the need to have it rushed. So we haven't heard that. This whole thing just doesn't pass the smell test. I'm in agreement with everybody else that, you know, the document is huge. We've got a ton of questions that I'm not even sure, you know, I had numerous questions. I'm not even sure that I'll even have time to be able to review my questions within the 10-day period. So I can't expect that you guys do. You're all busy. I understand that. So I'm agreeing, this does not pass the smell test. It feels a little corrupt. I want for there to be some more time put into this, and don't go to the whims of the developer. Listen to the residents of Park Santiago.
Hi, I'm Christine Denny Helbig. I live in Park Santiago. I've lived there since 1990. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. I normally default to respect, respect for ethics, and I think that you should be in a position to demand the amount of time that you need to make an educated decision on this EIR. 10 days is not enough. I watched my husband Dale get eaten alive by this EIR. 350 pages in the regular EIR, total of 3,500 pages. How you could make an educated decision on this EIR, which is going to undergo a significant rewrite because of the hundreds of comments that have been made on this document, how that's even possible, I don't know. So I would suggest that instead of having the discussion of having a special meeting on the 5th, which is really nothing in my mind but a bold move on the part of the developer who has realized that he over-invested in the property, and he has over-invested in his political contributions to a city council, to a city council set of candidates, that he may be watching that investment go down the tubes and have to start all over again with his discussions with a new set of city council people who hopefully are ethical people. You know, that's a big loss on his part, and it's a big power play on his part. And it is really, it doesn't escape anybody in this room, what is going on here. So my dad used to say, "You only go home with yourself at night. Whoever that person is, you better be proud of her because nobody can do it for you." And I would ask that all of you take a look at what's in front of you and decide what it takes to make an educated and ethical decision on this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, the next, the next three names I have is Brett Franklin, Lynette Ordinsky, and Ed Marashi.
Thank you. My name's Brett Franklin. I'm a former resident of 919 East Catalina, currently at 2419 Louise Street. Mr. Chairman, esteemed Planning Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity for us to come before you tonight and speak on this process. I really appreciate what Planning Commissioners do. I think it's a brutal, thankless job. You really are the first line of defense for us as residents, and you have the ability, more than anybody else in the city, to impact what the City Council will eventually do, both by your discussion and by your votes. And I really appreciate what you do because I know the amount of reading you do and research is far beyond anything the City Council does. I just wanted to give a little history of process on this, on this property at Edgewood and Main. You know, back in the early 90s, there was a developer, another big developer, Union Oil, that came to Park Santiago and told us that a gas station was the best we could do there, and that we ought to be thankful. And they sent a slick New York lawyer out, and he stood in a meeting of neighbors, many of them were in that meeting, and tried to convince those residents, you know, how lucky they were that, you know, that anyone would want to build anything there. And I think the same mistake he made is being made here today in 2018, when I think people outside San Ana judge us, and they think we're either too dumb or too lazy to get involved and to, to review the potential projects in our city. But I know that the vast majority of the residents in this city, even the ones that aren't able to come here tonight, throughout the entire city, north, south, east, west, they care, whether they know how to come down to a meeting or not. They care about development, and they care about a process. And I just want to say, as Planning Commissioners, I also understand, I've stood, I've sat on boards and commissions, and I understand the pressure you're under. There's pressure that comes from your colleagues, there's pressure that comes from lobbyists, there's pressure that comes from developers. But at the end of the day, it's your decision, and nobody else can, can, can do it for you. And I've stood up and made votes against developers and against interests, and I can tell you, the sun comes up the next day, and you feel good when you do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brett. Lynette?
Hi, good evening. My name's Lynette Ordinsky, 18-year resident of Park Santiago. I'm also on a committee at a nearby city, so I have, hold a fiduciary role there as well. I understand what it's like to be a fiduciary. It's a very, very, very important role. We should be partners with, in this process. I am strongly opposed to fast-tracking a meeting so soon when there are such large considerations. We've spoke of the density. We spoke of like trying to find dense, projects of similar density even that might be comparable to like look at for what, what might have gone before us, what might be used as an example, and it's difficult. So I really think that due process should be respected. There's been a lot of effort that has gone into this. It should not be, it, it should not be fast-tracked in any way. We should be partners as part of this. I like the idea that was proposed earlier of a working, a workshop on November 5. Again, I see this as a partnership with the residents, not as, you know, something that should be imposed upon us. Why, why the fast-track? I've, I've heard some pretty nasty words, things like corruption. I've heard, I don't even want to say the words, but I, why, why fast-track it? Why the pressure? This does not make sense unless something nefarious is at work. Thank you.
Ed Marashi.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. My name's Ed Marashi from Floral Park resident. First, let's have a quick civic lesson, a review of the Sunshine Ordinance states, Section 1B, "An informed public is essential democracy. It is the goal and intent of the City of Santa Ana Sunshine Ordinance that citizens of Santa Ana have the timely access to information, opportunity to address the various legislative bodies prior to decisions being made, and ease and timeliness access to public records." Health Care Org states that the average person reads at about 250 words a minute. Or for technical material, it drops to about 50 to 75 words per minute. So a document that's 3,500 pages is going to take the average person, on average, 12.1 days to read. Well, that doesn't sound like it's meeting the intent of the Sunshine Ordinance. And so I'm, I'm asking you to give the residents your position and due process, the respect it's due, and hold off that meeting and do the right thing. Thank you. Good night.
Dale Halbig? Dale Halbig?
Good evening, Commissioner and Chairman. Again, there's probably only one person in this audience that's going to get this, but I'll just say ditto. You know, ditto to the fact that it's the wrong time to have this vote on this issue. Ditto to the fact that you guys need a lot more time to digest this information. It's going to be presented to you once the final EIR is approved, whenever that is, before it goes to the certification process. It is an extensive document. It had a lot of flaws in it. Whether they're addressed by the consultant in the city, we don't know yet. We don't have that answer. And so it's, it's a big question mark. And also ditto to what Peter Katz said about Roman Reina. A letter was submitted to the City Attorney's Office today asking Mr. Reina to recuse himself. Hopefully, they look into that and follow up on that. And also ditto to everybody else's comments. They're all valid. You guys need time to look at this. And it is an important issue for not only our neighborhood, but for San Ana in general, as far as, are we going to let developers come into the city and essentially dictate to us what they want to have happen versus what we would like to see happen to our city? And as we've been saying from the very beginning, we're not opposed to development. We support responsible development. So, please consider everything that you've heard tonight and vote no for having the special meeting on November 5th. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. Peggy Stengel? Peggy Stengel?
That would be Peggy Stagle.
Okay. I just know Casey Stangle, so that's all I was going.
Good evening. And I'd just like to say, I might be related to you, Ms. Gary, that's my maiden name. So, just saying. Okay, my name's Peggy Stagle. I've lived in the neighborhood for thirty-nine years, and I love Park Santiago. I just want to point out a couple logical points here why this is not good for our neighborhood. Just think with me for one moment. Overflow parking. The people who putting this together, developers, one should believe that there's, we have plenty of parking for all of these residents and all of their friends when they come to visit, but they don't. You know that, I know that. So let's just take a visual. Coming north on Main Street, we've got the 5 freeway, we're on the west side. We've got, nobody can park there for overflow. We've got the Discovery Center, no one can park there. We've got Red Roof Inn, nobody can park there. We've got Polly's Pie, nobody can park there. We've got the Merrill Lynch Building, nobody can park there. You go across the next street, and there's, what's that big building? The Wells Fargo Building, nobody can park there but, except for the three-hundred-and-forty-five more new residents that are going in there. On the east side of the street, we got the freeway, we got 2525, no one can park, only people that live there can park there. Then we got the park, nobody can park there. And then we have the Morgan Stanley Building, nobody can park there. Nobody can park in the mother's parking lot across the street. Where are all the cars going to go? And the developer wants you to believe that these are going to be millennial people, and they're only going to have one car, and they're going to work out of their house and probably never leave. That's what they told us in the first meeting. They're going to be millennials, they're going to work out of the house. I'm sorry, it's not, doesn't work that way. The cost for everyone to live in these apartments, or they're going to sublease. The developers want you to believe, "Oh, we're not going to let people sublease." That's a bunch of crap, because they are. I'm sorry, that was a bad word to use. They're lying. They're lying. Now, the employees of the Discovery Center now park in 2525. You all know that. I talked to some of the employees when we were out picketing one morning, and they said, "You know, Discovery Center's been working on a parking lot for four years, and it hasn't come to fruition. They used to rent spaces at Main Place Mall." Well, they can't do that anymore because Main Place Mall's going to add nineteen-hundred more units. Where is people going to park? The overflow is going to be up and down Park Santiago neighborhood streets. I'm sorry, that's not acceptable. None of you would be asking your family and friends to come over and visit and bring their hiking boots, because you're going to have to walk three or four blocks to get to your house and carry your dishes of food. This isn't, it just doesn't even make sense that you guys would even consider this project. It's not logical. Vote no on the rezoning, and stop thinking that we're stupid people out here, because we're not. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Michael Planamora?
Good evening, Chairman and council members. My name's Mike Planamora. I've lived in Park Santiago for over fourteen-and-a-half years. My wife and I moved there, we fell in love with it when we first saw it, all the single-family homes and the friendly neighbors and everything. And we always got a kick out of when we invite people over for the first time, tell them we live in Santa Ana. Their vision is apartments, tons and tons of apartments. And Santa Ana, as you know, is almost fifty percent apartments right now, and this project is leading towards that fifty percent goal. But I want to talk about the rush to judgment. So why does the planning commission want to rush the 2525 Main Street project to the city council vote with a special meeting called the day before the November 6th election? It should be obvious to anyone that the developer wants to have a decision before a new council is in place. Why, you ask? Because now the developer is pulling its puppet strings to manipulate the planning commission to do its calling. The residents of Santa Ana deserve better. Their voices should carry more weight than any developer's money can buy. This rush to decision, this rush to a decision, while borderline illegal in my opinion, is definitely immoral and unethical. Now, my mom taught me, well, to be true to myself and those that you deal with on a daily basis. Always take the high road, the ethical road. If you get into a situation that's difficult to decide, ask yourself, "What would Jesus do?" If you, if you listen, you will make the right decision and the just decision. I hope that the council members will do the same and let the normal process take its course and reject the call for a special council meeting. Thank you. I just want to say one other thing. The SCAG Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy, to quote from it, the people, the government needs to continue to protect stable, existing, single-family areas, and I'm hoping that you take that into account and vote no for this special meeting.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anybody else at this time that would like to comment on item number five?
Yeah, you betcha. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Rob Richardson. I live in Park Santiago, and I've lived in the Park Santiago neighborhood since 2001. I've lived in Santa Ana since my folks brought me here in 1961, so I've seen my share of shenanigans over the last fifty-seven years as well, as somebody else said. I turned in a card earlier, so you should have that already on file. I got to ask a very simple question. Why are we here tonight? And perhaps I should wait until Mr. Ty comes back into the room. I think he needs to hear what I've got to say. What's more important than listening to the public right now? Because he needs to hear what I have to say. So I'll wait.
Candita, would you say if we could find Mr. Ty?
Well, while we're waiting for him to come into the public business, I think the question is, why are we here tonight? What is the public policy reason that put you, the members of the planning commission, into a room listening to fifty to seventy-five speakers? Why is that? Who put this on the agenda tonight? Thanks for joining us. So, I think it's been stated earlier this evening, we kind of expected there would be a statement from the staff explaining the public policy reason for having this on the agenda tonight, the reasons for calling for a special meeting of the planning commission, for having a truncated review process that leaves the public out and leaves, and disrespects the planning commission by expecting them to review documents that are released the same day as the meeting. Really? Is this what we've come down to in this city? I am ashamed, and you ought to be ashamed as well. And next time, you'll answer my email. I sent you one today. I sent it again last night, I sent it again during the noon hour today, I CC'd you, Candita, as well. The answer I got was a big zero, and the message to me as a member of the public is, "It doesn't matter what I say or do." But let me tell you right now, as other people have said here tonight, the folks here in this room didn't just fall off a turnip truck. They know what the score is, and it should be apparent to everybody in this room that there is not only members of the commission who are not here tonight, is the developer here in the room? The developer doesn't need to be in the room, because he has other people to speak for him. Why is this thing on the agenda? I respect, I respect each of you on the commission for being in a difficult spot. You don't deserve to be in this spot tonight. You have been misled and mistreated. You're owed an apology, if anything else. And so, like the others have said tonight, we've got a long way to go in this process. I think the notion of any kind of a meeting the day before, the evening before an election is preposterous and should be rejected out of hand. And I think if you all vote tonight by a four-oh vote to cancel this notion, you'll do yourselves and everybody else a tremendous favor. Thank you very much.
Good evening, good evening again. I just want to speak briefly here. I do oppose, I am here-
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. This is Bill Bonnet, Park Santiago resident for fourteen years. I am the treasurer and executive board member of Park Santiago. I've been the treasurer for about six years now. The issue we have here is a date issue. I, like Dale, read the entire EIR. I have a duty to my neighbors to read such a document and provide feedback to them. As you know, you have been CC'd on various emails, we have hired experts, legal experts, environmental experts, traffic engineering, all these people are now on our team. So I called them this week when I heard of this possible message, possible meeting on November 5th, and I said, "If we get this final EIR, would you be able to review it within ten days?" And you know what I heard from them? They said, "Bill, lack of prior planning on the part of the applicant does not and never will constitute an emergency on my part." I am a married man, I have two young children, I have a job. As I told you last time I hear, I'm a real estate developer. It's an incredibly busy job. These experts we hired, they have other jobs and projects as well. I cannot have them, they will not just drop everything they're doing for my project. So you, as commissioners, have a duty to not only allow me enough time to respond and read the final EIR, but my team of experts that we have engaged, we have a responsibility to the community and of North Santa Ana. So please reject this preposterous, preposterous proposal to have a meeting ten days, the absolute minimum required by law. The minimum, this is not a minimum project by any means. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Dresser, and I live in the Park Santiago, Park Santiago neighborhood. I too am here to ask you to vote no on scheduling the special meeting on November 5th. A vote yes for this special meeting, a vote yes for this special meeting is clearly an indication to us that the project is being fast-tracked to get it in front of the current city council. I want to share with you now some facts that also illustrate how this whole process has been fast-tracked. So these are, these are right from, is this microphone on? These are right from the City of Santa Ana's Planning Department website. You can go and look yourself. The Heritage Project, which is also an Agulmec Vineyard Development Project, the draft EIR, from the time the draft EIR was put out to the time the final EIR was put out, was six months. That document was four-hundred-and-seventy-five pages. First Street Family Apartment Project, the draft MND to the final MND was two months, five-hundred-and-seventy-two pages. The Metro East Mixed Use Overlay District Expansion, the draft subsequent EIR to the final subsequent EIR, two months, three-hundred-and-forty pages. The Sexlinger Project, from the draft EIR to the final EIR, sixteen months. Now let's talk about 2525. From the draft EIR to the final EIR, three weeks, three-hundred-and-fifty pages. How's that possible? How is it possible that the exact same author, Renee Escario, who authored and was the overseeing the draft EIR and the final EIR for the Heritage Project, also an Agulmec project, who did this EIR, who was doing the draft EIR on 2525, same person? It took her six months to do, to review and respond to eight objections, or eight responses to the draft EIR. We have hundreds of responses to the draft EIR, same person, and now somehow she's managed to do it in three weeks. How is that possible? Point number two, there's a process, and part of that process says that if there's a public hearing, that residents within five-hundred feet of the affected project are to be notified by the City of Santa Ana. There was a meeting, a public hearing, as per the agenda, I get it, as per the agenda on August 27th, that none of the residents within the five-hundred-foot radius in Park Santiago were notified by the City of Santa Ana that there was a public hearing. So as far as I'm concerned, we need to roll this whole thing back to August 27th and at least properly notify the people that are affected by this project.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
I also, I also sent, I also sent emails to Vince Fregoso and Selena Keller this morning, and I have not received a response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Adriana De La Rosa, and I am a resident of Park Santiago. And I don't have a lot of substantive stuff to add, as my neighbors have already just given you everything. At this point, honestly, I would, I cannot fathom that you would vote to approve this, this request to expedite this. I cannot fathom that. And so if that happens, I don't know what else we can do other than just clearly pursue legal action. But, but what I did want to, what I did want to share was that, and this might come across kind of weird, but I really felt kind of led to say this, I'm really proud of this moment for the city. I served briefly as CEO of Delhi Center, and I had partners, or I had people that were interested in coming and doing partnerships with us that, one specifically that I literally turned down, because in our meeting to explore the partnership, they basically said that Santa Ana was disgusting. And, and it was a very, it was almost kind of a traumatic moment for me, because a very good friend of mine, a famous person that was very interested in creating this partnership, was the one that had brought me together with this person. And when this person said this to me, I was so shocked, not surprised, but shocked. I was aware of the stereotypes. My husband and I made a very specific decision to come and live in Santa Ana for a very specific purpose, which was to make it better to the extent that we could. And so I knew-
At this point, honestly, I would, I cannot fathom that you would vote to approve this, this request to expedite this. I cannot fathom that. And so if that happens, I don't know what else we can do other than just clearly pursue legal action. But what I did want to, what I did want to share was that, and this might come across kind of weird, but I really felt kind of led to say this, I'm really proud of this moment for the city. I served briefly as CEO of Delhi Center, and I had partners, or I had people that were interested in coming and doing partnerships with us that, one specifically that I literally turned down because in our meeting to explore the partnership, they basically said that Santa Ana was disgusting. And, and it was a very, it was almost kind of a traumatic moment for me, because a very good friend of mine, a famous person that was very interested in creating this partnership, was the one that had brought me together with this person. And when this person said this to me, I was so shocked. Not surprised, but shocked. I was aware of the stereotypes. My husband and I made a very specific decision to come and live in Santa Ana for a very specific purpose, which was to make it better to the extent that we could. And so I knew the stereotypes, but I was shocked because I couldn't believe the audacity. And this was someone that wanted to attempt to do a good partnership. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with you because I do feel proud of this moment. I really believe that this is a very telling moment in the history of Santa Ana, though I haven't been involved in city politics actually very much at all. I do know that Santa Ana is known, okay, is known for just shenanigans, unfortunately. And I believe that that is changing, and I'm very excited about that. I appreciate the sunshine ordinance so much. And I just wanted to thank you honestly, Executive Director Ming Tai, because one of the, one of our neighbors said that this process was forced on us. And I'll wrap it up, this is my last point. It was forced on us, but that, that feeling began to change when you brought us in to meet. And now we're back in square one. So please correct it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Michelle, and I live on Valencia Street. I've been a resident for about five years, and I've come and talked to you a few times already about why I don't think this is right. First of all, we haven't had one good reason why we should have the meeting on November 5th. So throughout this whole time, not one good reason. So I think that's something everybody should remember, and if they are trying to push something, I totally agree with everything that they were saying, why they're trying to rush this. I just came from work, and I'm doing my best. I've printed flyers, I've worked really hard to show how much this community does not want this. And we're trying to protect our neighborhood. There's going to be a ton of apartments built across the street, and one more in this wrong location is, is, it's just not right. It's, it's, it's not the right spot, and if there's going to be a few others, I want you guys to protect our city. If you can do that, I, I, everybody here would be very grateful, and you would also be very, I think you would feel good about your decision too. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hi, I'm Karen Igar, and I live on Oakmont in Park Santiago. I appreciate you letting me address the agendas matter as well as speaking earlier tonight on the EIR in general. I really appreciate no votes from all of you on the November 5th meeting. Everything else on the agenda tonight had a staff report explaining the purpose of why it was there and the action that was being asked of the commission, except for this item. It just pops up on the agenda with no reason, no rhyme, no nothing, no backup for it at all. Seeing as how it's coming up with the next iteration of the EIR not even available, so we don't even know what's being recommended, we don't know what the mitigations are, we don't know anything, how can you be asked to vote to have a meeting to discuss something when you don't even know what the something is that you're asking for a meeting to discuss? And that the meeting is being asked for hours before polls open to elect new city council members can only lead this group behind us to think that there's something nefarious going on here, and the residents, the voters are the ones that are not being taken seriously in favor of a developer who may feel like he is owed something from the current council that the residents are not. So please, I ask all of you, you're being led, you're potentially being led astray. Look at who's not here tonight, look at who's, you're the ones that are going to have to take responsibility for this action. I ask you to please do the right thing on behalf of the residents of Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, Justin Chapman. I am a resident of Santiago for nine years, and I live in, on Spurgeon Street, immediately up against where this proposed project is going on. My wife and I have had countless discussions about this project, and with this meeting now coming up, we came to this final conclusion that if this thing gets greenlit, and the project is actually, or the process is actually respected, we would stay. We would honor that decision. But if it isn't, and there's clearly reasons what's going on, but if it isn't actually respected, the process is not respected, we're going to leave Santa Ana, the city, out of fear. Because we have no idea what's going to be coming next, and we have no say in what's going to be happening next. So I, I ask you guys, like, vote no, please, just give us time, respect the process. There's too many families out here, some that aren't being represented today, but I mean, they, they deserve time. They deserve respect. That's it.
Thank you, Justin. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak on item number five? Okay, please come up.
Actually, I'm Justin's next-door neighbor. I'm the new kid on the block, only been a resident since last March. So I wasn't up to speed on the things that were going on with this project, but I also back up to the project. I only wanted to say this to the council, since I moved in in March, I've been contacted a dozen times, maybe more, by the builders. Justin and, and my other next-door neighbor and stuff have been asked to come to a meeting. Every meeting that we've come to, the two brothers have said they'll pretty much give us anything we want, because if they can roll us, they would have a good chance of rolling the rest of the neighborhood, because we are the people that are most affected by it. That's going to come out at some point down the road here, if due diligence is completely done by, by the city council on this. I'm not going to get into politics, I've sat where you are. I, I totally respect the fact that the four of you sat here tonight and listened for all of this time that you've been sitting here listening. But you do have to think about the fact that you have people that have moved into Santa Ana, want to build a huge project in an older neighborhood, that the neighborhood has expressed to you. I think, I've never seen a city council or planning commission where people showed up like this. The neighborhood's serious, and there's enough stuff that these brothers have done that it's going to come out at some point. And I just think the city council needs to be very careful in their steps. I just wanted to relay to you that they've already offered me, they've offered to build me an eight-foot wall, they've offered to paint this, they've offered to move my wall, they've offered to do all kinds of things for my house if I just sign on. And quite frankly, when I first moved in, I didn't see any reason or why I should or shouldn't sign, until I found out what was going on. I mean, a guy moves into a new house, we downsized, my wife and I, we lived up in North Santa Ana, up on the hill, sold a large home, downsized, specifically moved into this neighborhood because of the neighborhood it was, and that's where we wanted to spend our retirement. Bought a home, I'm redoing the home, we're in the process of completely redoing this home, bringing it back to its 1953 luster, and can I fix it with a big building behind me? Of course. I can put a nice barbecue area in the back of my yard, put a roof on it, put a wall back there, and I'll never see what's behind me. But I will see who's going to park in my street. I will see who's going to park in my driveway. I'm also, I also own another property, I'm a president of Associate Homeowners Association there. I deal with the problems of people parking in the other, in people's driveways, I deal with them parking in their garage, soap and so on. So I, I understand what these residents are saying, and it is a real concern. You are dealing with some guys that, that are trying to get this project pushed through. I simply wanted to let you know what they'd offered, offered me, and I'm sure they've offered other people like things as well. So I, I also would vote no and do this full process on this to make sure. If you guys decide to build the building, I'm there, and I'll work around it. I hope you don't, but if you do, I'll live with your decision, but make the right decision based on the right reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Lopez, and I live in Park Santiago. Good evening, everybody. I just kind of wanted to say, I'm a millennial, I am lucky enough to live in your neighborhood, I'm lucky enough to rent there, and I would never live in an apartment complex like this. I would never raise my family in it. I would, I, when I got married, I never even considered to live in a place like an apartment complex like that. I considered living in the neighborhood that I live in now, and I'm lucky enough to live there. So I just hope that you guys say no to this special meeting, to take your time, that's all we're asking for, for you to take time and just to fully read the ER, EIR. So I hope you guys do that.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, last call, once again. Anyone else would like to speak on item number five? Hearing none, the public comments are closed. At this point in time, I'm going to just basically, from my perspective, first of all, I want to thank everybody for their input. I want to thank everybody for their comments, and thank you for adhering as best you can to the two-minute time, time limit that we put on tonight's meeting. What I'd like to do at this point in time, from my standpoint, from a step-one perspective, as chair, I believe that this is not the time to have the meeting. I believe that there's a lot of information that we still don't understand from our standpoint on the commission, and I am not in favor of having a special meeting on November 5th. So with that said, I'll bring it back to the commission to make a motion on item number five.
In order to have a special meeting, it either has to be called by the chair or processed by a majority of the members of the commission. So we would have to have four people supportive of the special meeting.
Okay. Everybody understands that? Okay.
He means what she said.
Okay, what, what was, what was said is that there are two items, two ways in which this vote can be taken. One is, I as the chair can make a motion to have the event, have the meeting or not have the meeting. I have chose to not have the meeting. The second option is for the commission to vote on it. And the vote has to be four affirmative votes. There are four people here, so do the math. Okay? So at this point in time, at this point in time, we're going to go and have a vote from the commission at this, at this moment on this item. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe some people in the audience had some good questions that I also have written down, and one of my, actually I have five questions, but one of them was, what was the original date on this project that was going to be voted? Did we have an original date? I thought it was like even last month, or when was the original date?
There was some anticipation based on the project timeline to potentially have the EIR documented complete and be heard early November, October, during the month of October. However, based on the comments that we did receive from the public requesting the extension of the comment period, the city did grant the two weeks as requested by the neighborhood. So that pushed back the hearing process. The goal is to get the project to a point where it meets the review standard based on regulations and law that have been established by the California Sequel Environment Quality Act, but all those, the state streamlining information, and when the project is ready for hearing. So the schedule was originally, at least intended, was to be sometime during this, the October period. However, because of the extension, that pushed it out a little bit further.
Okay, and I have other questions. So when is the EIR report going to be ready?
The, the state law requires that it has to be, the final ER has to be a minimum of 10 days public hearing.
Okay, and I noticed that, I was hearing a lot of folks saying, you know, let's wait for the new council to vote on or not on this project. I feel competent to take a vote or not, but when do the new officers take office? Because, I mean, how, I'm not sure if they have a date in their mind, but when do the new officers take office?
I'm going to ask for attorneys to help for this, but I believe it's the second meeting in December.
No. December 11th?
December 11th.
So even if we delayed this project per se, we're not going to have a meeting on November 12th because it's Veterans Day, correct? And then we don't have a meeting on Thanksgiving, or the week of?
The next meeting is scheduled for November 26th.
November 26th, okay. So if we delay the project, when will the new date be? Or if we don't vote on this meeting?
So the regular meetings as sketch, as state by the bylaw is when it falls on a holiday, such as the Veterans Day. The regular planning commission meeting would then fall on the next Tuesday, which is the 13th. If that meeting is not held, then there's the regular meeting of the November 26th, which is the one after Thanksgiving week.
And whether we approve this project or not, when does the city council then get to vote to take a recommendation?
It would have to be after the planning commission has already considered and made a recommendation on the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
No. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment. First, I would like to disclose that I got a call from the developer today asking me to support for the, on the, the meeting on November 5th. You know, the, in my opinions, when somebody trying to move into the neighborhood, you should be a good neighbor, try to work with, to be friendly, with support by your neighbor, and the, you know, the developer should work closely with locals around resident to, to come up with design that would, you know, would make majority of the resident happy to accept it and welcome the new neighbor coming to their neighborhood. I agree with most of the speaker today, this evening, that the indication, clearly indicated that length of the time prepared for the EIR, and a time for us to have an opportunity to review the AR, not enough. I, I, I would not able to make a decision, you know, good decision based on lack of information. And, and some of the speaker also said, by, by the people, and for the people in the first defender of the resident of Santa Ana, I am that person. I'm here to support you. So listed the odd concern, and, and for the best interest of Santa Ana resident, I am not in favor of the move special election on November 5th.
Any other comments?
I also am not in favor of having a special meeting on the 5th. I, I, coming into this meeting, I didn't feel that that was necessary, that we need to rush the process. I'm, I'm not aware of why, why we have to, considering that the final EIR is not complete, and I am also not comfortable that I'm going to have enough time by, by the time I receive the final EIR to the time that we would have a special meeting, that's just not enough. So I'm not sure how we got here, or why we just spent two hours of our time sitting here to talk. I'm clearly, clearly disappointed that we didn't have the opportunity to have this discussion ahead of time, because I would have told you on the phone that that's not going, it wasn't going to happen for me. it wasn't gonna happen for me. Um, but I appreciate everyone for coming out and making your comments and, um, I know we'll be seeing you all soon. But I just wanted to make my comments so you were well aware that I, I wasn't going to support the, the special, uh, meeting from the get-go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I also didn't know that the EIR report was not ready. I would hope that in the future, when we do have to vote on such things, that we have everything ready so that we can be ready for the day we take a vote. But my question now is to the staff, um, what is gonna happen to the other two projects that were also on the agenda for the special meeting? Or was it just gonna be for that special project? Because I see that we have the Calvary Chapel and then we have the Housing Opportunity Orders Review. What would happen to those items?
So the, the, um, understanding that the 2525 main project was going to have quite a subsequent discussion, um, that there will be, uh, a large amount of recommended, um, public input as well as the presentation of the IR and the project. Um, the, the, I, the, the idea was that to have the item on its own so that it gives due time for the presentation of the information and also allow the public to, to be able to present all of the, um, the comments and allow the planning commission adequate, adequate time to provide input. So, I know that's not a practice that's been done in the past, but we recognize and respect the amount of time that's spent on the project. We wanna make sure that there's adequate time to have this item, whether it happens on a regular meeting or whether it's on a special meeting, our goal is to give you adequate time to consider this item, considering that it's, you know, the amount of public comments that we've heard over the past, at least my, since I've been here, since May, and I'm sure it's been longer than that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would like to add one more thing. Um, I did, personally, I did not aware of this project to be considered this evening, at this meeting. Um, some of you may know, my father passed away five weeks ago. I'm still in the process of mourning of my father. And I'm not planning, honestly, I did not plan to attend meeting tonight. But again, when I learned that three of our commissioner will be, uh, absent tonight, and then my, be, this meeting, it's evening, it's so important, otherwise the meeting will not gonna happen. So I made the special effort to be here this evening to support the resident and support the city of this project.
Thank you. I'd just like to add in, uh, that, you know, I think it was said earlier, and that is, is that I would hope that as we move forward with this process, that we do it in a manner in which everybody understands and it's a totally transparent process and we have, and we have the trust and support of the neighbors and everybody else, whether, you know, however the, the process ends up. But I think we have to make sure we maintain transparency and trust, and I have not seen that in this process at this point in time. Okay? Okay, I would say that, do we have a motion on item number five?
I'd like to make the motion not gonna have a meeting on November 5th.
Do we have to make it as a motion?
It's not really a motion, Chris.
Go ahead.
You didn't, you didn't requi, you, I'm sorry, you didn't request as the chair to have a special meeting, and we didn't meet the four affirmative votes to have a special meeting, so there will be no special meeting.
So we don't have to vote? Okay. Okay, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna have this come back and say we didn't vote on it or didn't do anything on this. So it's basically been four, zero to four.
That's correct. It doesn't meet the standard for calling a special meeting.
Okay, we're done on item number five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, what's that? Yes. Okay, one thing I'd like to ask is, those that are leaving, could you please, if you're having a discussion, if you can leave and, and have that discussion and lobby, we have other items on the agenda that we have to address at this time. That includes you, Rob Richardson.
It wa, it was an amendment, so, yeah, so they needed us to be, that one is the one they, yeah. Yeah, whenever it's an amendment, that has to be, um, kind of.
Okay.
Uh, they did.
Okay, the staff.
Are they too loud on there?
What's that?
Are they too loud?
So the staff, the regular meeting is... Okay, if we can, um, first of all, this is the time and place to consider item number two, which is general plan amendment, uh, number 2001, uh, 2018 dash 04 and the amendment application of 2000, uh, 2018, 0 dash 07 for the annexation of 25 acres of the county island at the northeast corner of 17th Street and Tustin Avenue. This item has been continued till the next meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for November 26th.
We would need to take a vote on that, Chair?
Pardon?
Can we please take a vote on that to continue the matter?
Can we vote on it?
Yes.
Sure.
I'll move continuance till October 26th.
Okay, we have a motion?
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four, zero, three absent. This is the time and place to consider item number three, conditional use permit.
If, if I may, I'm sorry, um, based on the noise, I, I can't hear the action that was requested. Um, but I understand the vote is to continue the item.
The item, item number two was asked to be continued?
Yes.
And we voted on it four, zero, three absent.
Thank you. If you can, um, I thought I heard there's a date specific. If you can make it to a date nonspecific, we'll have to renotice it when we, uh, go back to hearing. So just, if you can please just make it date nonspecific and we'll notice the public at that time.
Date nonspecific?
Yeah.
To a future date, basically.
I'll amend my motion to a, a continuance that is indefinite?
To a future date.
Future date.
Continue to a future date.
Fine.
Second?
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four, zero, three absent. All right. This is the time and place to consider item number three, conditional use permit number 2018 dash 19, conditional use permit number 2018 dash 20, and variance number 2018 dash 11 to allow an eating establishment with drive-through service, after-hours operation, and a driveway within 150, 50 feet of the intersection at 2301 North Tustin Avenue.
Good evening, Chair McLaughlin, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, the proposal before you tonight is, uh, to construct a approximately 3,500 square foot, uh, retail building with two tenants, one being Starbucks and a future unknown tenant, at 2301 North Tustin Avenue. It's also proposed to merge the lot with the adjacent parcel at 2151 East Santa Clara Avenue and make, uh, building improvements to the facade of that existing convenience store. There are three entitlements requested. First, the conditional use permit to allow for a restaurant with drive-through service. Second, a conditional use permit to allow, uh, the drive-through to operate 24 hours per day, and a variance to allow a driveway to be located within 150 feet of a street intersection within the C5 arterial zone, which is zoning for the project. Um, this project was before you at the October 8th Planning Commission meeting, at which time two members of the public spoke and one comment letter was received. Uh, public comments were made regarding concerns with an increase in traffic, traffic safety, and issues with homeless individuals in the area. The Planning Commission directed staff to work with the applicant to discuss any traffic safety measures and continued the item to tonight's meeting. Uh, staff has re-analyzed the project, uh, in conjunction with the Public Works Agency and recommends, uh, three improvements, uh, to the site. The first one being the driveway on Tustin Avenue to install a pork chop right turn only directional curb. This will, uh, in order to allow for the pork chop to be constructed, increase the width of the driveway to allow vehicles then to enter and exit, in which case it would further the need to request for the variance for the driveway's proximity to the intersection. For the driveway along Santa Clara Avenue, it would be to install a right turn only sign to direct traffic westbound onto Santa Clara. And the third would be, uh, a fair share analysis, a fair share analysis was conducted in regards to the trip generation for the project. And for the left turn signalization, it would be $27,074. This is a different dollar amount that, than what was indicated in the staff report. Um, the number that was included within the staff report included, uh, an analysis of using the convenience store square footage, and that's an existing building, so it's not generating any additional or new trips. Um, in order to ensure that these are, are addressed, there are three conditions of approval that have been added to each of the entitlements, uh, which you'll see in your, uh, staff reports. And, uh, there was also a red line that was handed out in regards to the change of the dollar amount and that this, uh, fair share fee would be paid at the time of certificate, at the time that the certificate of occupancy is issued. Um, here's a, a site plan with a sketch of where the improvements would be. You can see in red, there's a depiction of the pork chop on Tustin Avenue and also the right-hand turn, uh, right turn only sign on, uh, East Santa Clara. Here's an overview of the revised conditions, which were also passed out to you. And, um, with that, that includes the staff report with the recommended actions, um, to approve the entitlements before you tonight. And that concludes the staff report. You have any questions of staff? The applicant, uh, please let me know.
Does the commission have any questions of staff?
I have a question. Selena, so the pork chop on Santa Clara, we didn't talk, I, I don't remember talking about that, but, um, so i, if we put, if there's a pork chop on Santa Clara and someone wanted to turn left onto Santa Clara, did they go to use the other driveway that's further east?
So the pork chop would actually be on Tustin Avenue?
No, there's, it said San, it said something about Santa Clara, a pork chop on Santa Clara. I know that, I know about the, we talked about the one on Tustin Avenue. It says, oh, I'm sorry, it's not a pork chop. Santa, uh, Santa Clara Avenue installed a right turn only sign to direct traffic westbound onto Santa Clara. So if somebody wanted to turn left on Santa Clara, what do they have to do?
Uh, they could go out the other driveway, which is a shared driveway with the, uh, parcel to the north.
Okay. And then the other question, my concern was mostly about the left turn lane at the signal, which obviously the fair share is, it's not going to cover the actual change of the, of the, um, signal to, to add that left turn. If, if they contribute $27,000, when does the city have to, um, come up with the remaining amount to do the left turn lanes? At the time of the project completion or sometime later when it's on the C capital improvement project schedule?
Uh, I'll let Take Higgins with Public Works answer that, but I believe it could be at a later date.
So he has his specifics.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Um, the, the, the timing requirement would be when the city receives funding for the project. We've, we've already applied for that, uh, for the signal modification that would include those left turn signals.
Has that been approved?
Uh, no, no, it hasn't been approved. We, we applied for it just this, this July. We'll find out soon. Um, the, uh, just a little further, I, you didn't ask this yet, but, um, if the, if we did not receive funding, we could include, uh, an agreement that the, the developer submit a fair share, uh, for the 27,000. And then if, if within five years we don't receive the funding, we could return, in fact, we would be required to return the money at that point.
Okay.
We couldn't, I'm sorry, we couldn't keep it indefinitely.
Okay, so you were just, you're gonna bank it until you, it, and if, in fact, you don't get the approved funding through the, the application process, then, and we exhaust five years, then we would return that money and we would not get a left-hand signal and we'd give them the money back?
We, we wouldn't. And, and I can tell you, we would apply for it again. We wouldn't just, uh, hang our hat on that last application. We would continue to apply.
So this, so it would be in our favor then to collect this as part of this project so it can offset some of our costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, can you go back to the, uh, slide before that one? The one, I think before that. Do you have the specific three conditions that were, um, imposed for this to be on the agenda tonight? Because it says, in the, the one that you had before, it says, oh, are these it, the three additional conditions? Are those it?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause I didn't see them in the packet as these were the three, like I'm seeing them there. So that's why I was asking.
I think we got them separate.
Oh, that's that. See, 'cause this didn't even, yeah, okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Selena?
Actually, I do have a question. I couldn't hear.
I'm sorry.
I couldn't hear when they were outside. Which corner is this that you guys are talking about? Santa Clara and Tustin?
Northeast corner of Tustin Avenue and Santa Clara Avenue.
Okay, next to the liquor store.
Correct.
Okay, I saw one of them. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any other questions or, of the staff? All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Would the applicant at this point in time like to say anything?
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Ralph Deppish. Um, I represent the client, my client who is the owner and developer of this property. Um, she has been the owner of the property for some time now and a resident of Santa Ana for over 40 years. I just want to reiterate again that, um, what I said two weeks ago briefly, that this has been a collaborative effort between the, the city's planning department and other, um, departments, as well as my, my client, to, we believe, develop a responsible, well-designed, well-served, um, small development on this corner that will increase taxes, both sale and property taxes to the, to the, to the city, as well as over 40 jobs to the community. As I review the changes and discussions with the planning department and going over those changes, proposed changes to add safety and traffic mitigation measures, uh, we not only support, we not only approve, but support those three changes and, um, agreed to those and respectfully, respectfully request that the commission tonight would approve this project so that we can proceed with the development of this well-designed project in the community. so that we can proceed with the development of this well-designed project in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, have we received any correspondence on this item?
We have not.
Thank you. We will now open it for public comment. I have one public comment. Lucina Rega, Rigo?
Mrs. Rigo is the owner of the property, and has asked me to speak for her, which I just did. She's here to answer any questions as an owner, but prefer that I would respond and make the comments that I just made. Thank you.
Thank you. Would that will close public comments? Oh, yes? Okay, if you're gonna make a comment, please pull out a card when you...
I will, if we, oh, there's cards back there. I heard this project a couple of weeks ago, and I was actually very happy with the way it was going. You know, it's improving that corner tremendously. I like the looks of it, the design, the incorporation into the mini-mart design as well. I've driven by that area many times, in the morning, and the afternoon, and everything else. The comments and concerns you had on the traffic. There is a little bit more traffic in the afternoon, or in the morning than in the afternoon, but I've never seen it as a problem as far as congestion going there. So, I don't really know what the mitigation efforts you took to address that. If it's a left turn signal heading westbound on Santa Clara, I'd say that's probably a bad move, because right now you have a free-flowing of people turning left, even when it's a full green, because there's not really that many people heading east on Santa Clara that would impede them from turning left. So, anyway, I just wanted to say it looks like a great project. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. Please state your name.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ulysses Carmona, and I live at Woodland North, 2026 East Santa Clara. And I had a question about the right turn. I thought it was on Tustin. I thought it was supposed to be on Tustin and not Santa Clara. Because how close that drive entry was gonna be to the corner on Tustin and Santa Clara? And also, I wanted to point out the, the bus stop that's close to the drive entry. I wanted to see if that could be pointed out also.
The bus stop's on Tustin, and this is a pork chop, so it limits to the turns to the right.
So, I just wanted to ask if the, if the queuing of that drive entry was taken into consideration with the, the bus stop being approximately maybe 15 feet away from the drive entry? Those are my, my questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, if, if the question is, did we consider the bus stop and the queuing as it relates to the, to the private property, we didn't. I mean, it's, we have bus stops, far-side bus stops throughout the city. This is no different than just, you know, just about every other corner, where we have, where we have markets, drive-throughs, gas stations. It's, you know, it's just a typical corner.
Okay. Thank you, Take. Any other public comments at this time? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Can I just understand that, that situation with the bus? Is the bus stop, is that before we, you get to the, the drive, the pork chop driveway that's being proposed? Is the bus stop before? So, basically, if the bus, and it's not a, it's not a, in, I mean, there's not a bus ingress. So, if the bus is stopped, it's gonna do what it, it basically would do what it does today, which is back up the traffic, so somebody wouldn't, they'd either have to go around the bus and try to turn in, cutting the bus off, or they'd have to wait behind the bus. But that would be the same situation as any other business that had a driveway in retrospect to the bus stop, right? I know that happens today when I go to work on MacArthur and Fairview, that the bus stops and there's a driveway to Calvary right after that. So, you have to wait behind the bus, or you have to go around the bus, and then basically cut the bus off to get in.
So, the location of the bucks, bus stop, sorry, where's the cursor? Is approximately where my cursor is? So, it is before the pork chop on North Tustin, so that would be possibly waiting here to pick up anyone riding the bus. And then, to make a right-hand turn, you would again have to go in front of the bus, like you described. And Take did say this is a typical configuration for bus stops and corner lots.
But that's no different than we have in a whole bunch of other different bus stops throughout the city, correct?
Correct. It's a typical condition.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion at this point in time on item number three?
I'll motion recommended action. Number one, we adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit 2018-19 as condition to allow drive-through window service, adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 2018-20 as condition to allow for after-hours operations within 150 feet of residentially zone and used property, and adopt a resolution approving variance number 2018-11 as condition to allow for a driveway within 150 feet of a street intersection.
I'm second.
Second? Any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four zero, three absent. This is the time and place to consider item number four, zoning ordinance amendment number 2018-04 to amend various sections of chapter 41 of the San Ana Municipal Code relating to R2 and Townhouse Standards, Schools, Country, Country, Citywide Design Guidelines, and French Park SD19, and Henninger Park SD40. Do any commissioners have anything to say at this point in time? So, at this point, Min, do you have anything to say on this?
No, I, I heard earlier mentioned that I spoke on number four. That was a mistake on my part. It was, I referred to the annexation, which was the annexation, that was to continue. So, the person was, was notified, and he, he left the meeting. So, this item should still go on. My apologies.
May I ask one quick question on this, if I may? From my perspective, and from the, in the past, what we've done with this type of item is, prior to coming to the, to the Planning Commission, it was usually a subcommittee meeting to talk up this, the policy subcommittee meeting, which Beatrice and myself are part of, and nothing was done with respect to that. From my perspective, I would like to ask for continuance on this item, so that we can in fact have a meeting and go through the details of this, because it's not clear from my perspective as to what are the details and what's being asked at this point in time.
If that's the practice of the city, I would fully encourage that we do that. Is there any member of the public here at this point that would want to discuss this item? That's, that would be the only request. If not, you can certainly, I would support that you, you continue this and have that subcommittee meeting, if it's a standard practice for us.
I'd like to do that, if I could, and make a motion that we continue this item, number, number four at this time.
I second.
Okay.
May I know who the members of that subcommittee is?
Beatrice and myself at this point in time. Yes.
We'll call you separately to set up, uh, set up that committee meeting.
Okay. All right, so we've had, we've made a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero, three absent. Okay. That brings us to staff comments. Do we have any staff comments at this point in time?
Yes, in light of only having two people on that subcommittee, you may want to, at your next meeting, appoint a third member to the policy and zoning subcommittee.
Any other comments from staff? Okay. Commissioners' comments? Ken?
I would like to express my personal, family and I personally sincere appreciation for your, the, your support, and your condolences to my father, who has recently passed away. Again, thank you.
Beatrice?
I just want to say Happy Election Day and Happy Veterans Day, since we will be here. Thank you.
Lyda?
I just want to send my condolences to Ken, you and your family, over the loss of your father. And I would also, if we could, I don't think we've, we, unless we did it before and I wasn't here, but if we could adjourn the meeting in his memory.
That's fine.
I would like to do that.
Okay.
Other than that, I have no other comments.
All right.
I have no other, I have no comments at this point in time, other than I would like to make sure that we, since we went through this process today with regards to special meeting, I would like to hope that at this point in time, we are moving 2525 off the calendar for this year. And it won't be something that we'll see coming to the council this year, or coming to the commission, until maybe the end of the year, if that's, if that's even possible, based on the calendar. So, I'd just like to voice that statement and opinion, so that we don't go down the road that we went down this evening, because I think that that was very premature on our part and on the part of the department to try to push this through the way it was done at this point. So, I'd like to make sure that we do something a lot different as we move forward on this process of evaluating all the aspects of 2525 Main Street, one way or another.
Any comments noted.
Okay. With that, we will close this meeting in honor of Ken Nguyen's father. And we... Your father's name?
Trinh Nguyen.
Trinh Nguyen?
Yeah.
Okay.
I may add, General Trinh Nguyen. My father, the general of the South Vietnam Army.
Okay. And that's fitting from the standpoint of Veterans Day coming up too, so, thank you. Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned, and you were gonna say something, Min?
Yes, regarding the November meeting date, since, based on the bylaw, it is a date that's gonna fall on a Veterans Day, my recommendation is just to keep the process, based on the bylaw, for that date. If there's no item that we have on that agenda, we will notify the, the commission. But I would recommend that we don't specifically adjourn to the 26th, and leave our bylaws, and follow the process for our hearing dates.
Okay. Go ahead.
We had already received a cancellation of the speaking at the Veterans Day. I think that's why.
Right, I mean, that's, and that's, and that, you know, I mean, we listen to what you say from a department perspective. You said the meeting, the, the planning department said that the meeting was canceled. It didn't say it was scheduled for the 13th. It said the meeting was canceled, and the next meeting would be November 26th. So, that's what we're going to. We're following the instruction and the direction that you provided. And if that's not correct, how are we to know that? I mean, it really needs to be clear. And, and frankly, you know, this is, this is something that continues on where we have confusion, and we end up at the end of the meeting clarifying things. And, and I don't think that's right. So, from our standpoint, you know, we'll, we'll adjourn the meeting till the next meeting. I'll make it as simple as that, and not discuss, discuss whether it's the 13th or the, or the 26th.
So, when will that be decided? I, I'm unable to attend. I have school on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so I wouldn't be able to attend on the 13th. So, if it, if it comes back onto the calendar, I just want to make sure that, that that's on.
And I'm not gonna be able to attend on the 13th, because I'm gonna be out of time.
Noted. Thank you.
So... Okay, meeting is adjourned in, in honor of Ken Nguyen's father, Trinh Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you.